Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you, Lord, for those that are gathered together for the best interest of this city. We pray that you bless the council, the mayor, bless our emergency responders, the small businesses. We pray that you bless them and prosper them as well. And, Lord, we just ask you to have your way and continue to favor and bless Miami County in Jesus' name. Amen. And happy birthday, Dave.
Okay, we'll have a little call.
Holland?
Here.
Guston?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Ally? Bowman?
Here.
Langwell?
Here.
Kroskop?
Here.
Next, we have the reading correct with the journal. We suspend the rules to dispense with the reading correct with the journal.
Correct.
Suspended by Councilman Kroskop and seconded by Councilman Guston to suspend the rules and dispense with the reading correct with the journal. On paper?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. We have a presentation, a report that Mr. Titt has given us from Makita on the TIF district.
I can, yes, sir. I recognize the motion.
Assume the position.
Yeah.
Good evening. Jim Titt with Miami County Economic Development. Hopefully, you received copies of the annual TIF management report that's required for development commissions to submit via Gameplay and with Tish's assistance and with UMBR, now brokered through it. They helped us prepare that report. The report should identify all of the TIF areas that are in Miami County and specifically those that are within the city of Peru. It basically looks at the income that comes in, those from real property, taxes that are paid within the TIF, and then expenses that are paid out for activities that have taken place within that TIF district. So if you remember, the TIFs are basically the US 2431 quarter that we also expanded to include the downtown district. And more recently, we connected that with the West End TIF district and then also included the Peru Industrial Park as part of that development to help with the expansion of Horace Electrolite and some others. So anyway, there is no action really for the council to take. I would just ask if you could just acknowledge that you did receive that report as part of the minutes of the council. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think they have, Tish, they received all the copies of the report, right?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Did? Was that given to them in the last meeting packet?
They have been in their mailboxes ever since Jim bought them up, day one, and then I just brought everything from all of their mailboxes down tonight.
Wow, okay.
So they were delivered.
Okay.
So let me put it this way, if there are any questions, wouldn't you get a chance to look at that? If you do, just please give me a call, send me an email, be happy to. But as a matter for the state border accounts, we at least have to acknowledge that you did receive the report. Hopefully, you would agree with everything that's in there. I don't think there's anything that is out of the ordinary. But if you could, just take action to ensure that that's incorporated in the minutes tonight. I'd sure appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Sir Makita. Thank you.
Josh Chan is actually, isn't here from Utilities, but we do have some members from Utilities here with us. Josh had a family issue, so I believe this is Brett?
Brett.
Brett, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's fine. I've been called boards. I am here filling in for Josh to demo the customer portal. This is something that went along with the AMI metering project that we started a year ago, year and a half ago. We had 98 percent of the meters in. We're still doing some digs and some installs on the AMI, on the electric meters, on some of the A Base meters. But this is an additional feature that came along with the census software that we're trying to get ruled out to our customers. I know we would get a lot of calls from customers wanting to know their usage, why is my bill so high? So this is a feature again that we're trying to get ruled out. I'm just going to keep this brief and try to walk through it quickly because I know you guys have a big agenda tonight, so.
Is that my finger here?
No, that's.
That's the best it gets?
It goes through a converter, so it.
Okay.
He's a good man. So to access the customer portal, you can either go to our website, there's a tab here, Customer Portal, or you can go to our Innispaw Online Payments website, and there's a tab there to access it. And I'm just going to briefly walk through this like it's a brand new account. So you'll come to this customer portal page, and down at the bottom, if you don't have an account, it'll ask you, need to set up an account. It will, you just briefly look through this. It needs an account number and a security token, which is your total current charges on your most recent bill. So those are the only, that's the only information you need to get signed up. You accept this. You type in the email address that you'd like to use for any notifications, and it will send a confirmation email to your email account. You go in there and click on that link and verify that. Then it'll bring you up here to page to put in your account number, and Jim has been nice enough to loan us his account tonight as a demo. We'll run any water. And then the security token would be the most recent charges on his bill. And then you can put a cell phone number in there for text messages for high usage. If you're on vacation, you can set an alert to where if there's any usage while you're out of town on these dates, it can send you a text message and an email. So I'll go ahead and just put that in there. And then you got to set up a password. Yep. Now my day's gone. Sorry, guys.
We've done this all.
Yeah. Okay, so I've got that set up, so again, you need to type it in again.
As long as you keep the lights on, the water flow, we don't care.
We do a better job of that than what I'm doing right now.
This is just exactly what's going to happen.
I mean, to be fair, this will be how it actually goes. The goal is to keep your password short and sweet.
Yep. I deleted my whole account before I came, so I could walk you guys through this, and here I am.
You did a good job of deleting it.
Yeah. We're in. So it'll come up, if you did put in your cell phone number, it'll come up and have you, it sends you a text message to the phone number you gave them. It'll send you a text message asking for an activation code, and you just punch that in to verify. Okay, cellphone's in there now. So again, you can see I've got Jim pulled up here with his address. This is his electric usage. You can see it's the electric meter here, and then you can drop it down and look at the water meter if you do have water. And what this does is it shows a dashboard with your billing cycle for this month and last month, and currently he used 1,860 gallons this billing cycle. You can go in and set thresholds to where you can take your monthly average and put it somewhere close to that, so if you exceed that number, this on target kind of lets you know that you're on your monthly pace. Usage details, you can go in, you can look at the last 24 hours, the last seven days, last 30 days, so I can go here at 24 hours. And it will, so on 5-4, Jim used, it looks like, 198 gallons. And the temperature, something that goes along with the electric that we're trying to really push to the customers is, if you have high usage, you need to pay attention to what the temperature is outside. A lot of people forget bills are a month later, everything's a month behind, so that's a good feature to have, to be able to look at that temperature. So again, you can go up 30 days, and again, this is on his water, so it won't fluctuate as big as the electric will. But you can see his usage every day was, it's kind of nice. You can go, and so if you have kids in town, summer break, holidays, you can kind of go back and see, okay, yeah, I remember, we had family in town, so. Another feature, you can look at your meter here, it gives the meter number, your last read as of 2:00 PM was 33,489 gallons. He averages 85 gallons a day, and he averages 23, almost 2,400 gallons a month. Blaine, I believe you have the customer portal set up. Have you made use of it at all?
I have. I had one question, I was going to wait for you to give it.
Okay, that's fine. I kept, I know he was one of our first guinea pigs, I guess you could say. So you can go here to Usage Details, this is a real nice feature, and it will give you your average. Again, he averages 2,386. So I've gone in here and said, okay, if my usage exceeds 3,000 gallons before the end of the billing cycle, I want you to enable an alert to me and let me know, so we don't send an email and a text message to you. So you can go and enable that feature. If you're worried about your daily usage, you can go in and set, you know, anything there. The thing that's really nice down at the bottom is what we call the vacation alerts. You can go and enable that. So if you're a snowbird that goes out of town for four months out of the year, you can go and say, okay, I'm going on vacation May 7th, and I won't get back till May 28th, and I want between that date range, between that date range, if I use more than 150 gallons at any time, 24 hours, it will send me an alert text message or email. And again, what's nice about that, basement leaks during the winter, broken pipes, that's really good for if you have rental properties, anything like that. You can also go to the Alert Recipients, and down here at the bottom, you can add an Alert recipient, so if you have a cousin, a brother, a family member watching the house, you can also set them up during that date range to receive the vacation alerts or any alerts. So if you're overseeing maybe your grandmother's house or in-laws or anything, so that's a very good feature that we've made use of it. It's really helped on some leaks on some properties for rentals. Trying to see, there was one last thing here I wanted to show you. So this was the water side again, the electric pretty much is mostly identical on the screens, same features, same alerts you can set up for leak alarms and such, so. We posted this on Peru Utilities' website, Facebook, we're handing out some memos in the front office. We're trying to get this out for our customers to use. We went from completely old school to this, so there's a huge adjustment, and we're just trying to get this out there to be beneficial for the customers, so. Any word of how to spread it would be great. There are still fewer bugs we're working out, but as with anything, there's always updates to come, so. Question?
I did, so I've used it quite a bit since I've signed up with it, and I absolutely think it's fantastic. It is like you went through, getting it signed up, getting set up with it, takes a little bit of time, but once you do, I'm pulling you, take a little bit of time and read between those pages because there is a plethora of information that you can use. The only question I have, when I set up the alerts, when do those alerts happen? Is it immediately after you exceed the threshold, or is it set as a time period?
It should immediately when you hit that threshold, it should alert you, at least within an hour to 12-hour period, but I would say an hour mostly. Because the water, the electric reports, it keeps track of the meter every hour, but it reports every 12 hours. The water meters take 15-minute intervals, but they only report every four hours unless we reach out to the meters and say, hey, we need a read or we need some data for this, so.
Sure. So I've played with my alerts and set them up in different thresholds just to see how it does. So generally, the alerts will come in anywhere between 1:00 and 3:00 a.m. in my emails. So I haven't got any, and the text message, I haven't got any of those yet, but I figured there's some things you guys are still working through, but it'd be nice to know feedback on.
Yeah, we're still working with some of the commercial accounts, the three-phase meters and such, the way they're reporting in on the graphs, it's kind of a little with the multipliers and such, and we're working on that. That brings me up to one thing, the question we do have that I was going to show you guys, is if you have multiple accounts, you can go under the User Settings, and this is kind of hidden in there, but you can go to Manage Accounts, and this is where you can add accounts, so. You only need one sign-in, and you can add multiple accounts, as long as you have that account number and that most recent bill.
Nice.
And whether it's a duplicate, electric only, or electric and water, it'll automatically dump that information in there for you.
Very cool.
But thank you for that. I will look into that with tech support and see if they have a certain window that they push.
Sure. And if it exists when it happens, then it'd just be nice for everybody to kind of know, oh, that alert will happen, you know? But sometime within that last 24 hours, something caused it to exceed that threshold, right?
Absolutely. And yeah, I'm with you, play around with the settings. There's a, you know, again, people don't worry about their bill until they get it and then wonder why, and this is to be proactive, not only to conserve, but to keep your bills average throughout the year, so. Anybody got any questions at all here? You?
I'm just sort of, I'm looking forward to it. I'm concerned about mostly like senior citizens or a lot of them, if it takes you that long to sort of get it started, if we have anyone to be able to help them?
You can call in and speak to our customer service ladies. They have been walked through this and trained on it. One thing that's beneficial, I'll show you here, is this is something we use on our end, it's called Census Analytics, but I can pull up, I can pull up a customer account, and because I know Blaine has it, I'll just type in Holland here, and I'll pull Blaine up. And I can click on this customer tab, this customer portal tab here, if he's on the phone with me.
Right.
And it will take me into his physical portal, portal that I can walk through with him. This is a range, you can see here. So I can access his information. I can't change any alerts, I can't change any recipients, but I can walk through and say, okay, go over here to User Details, you know? So definitely call into the office, the ladies can be very beneficial and helpful to you, so.
Yeah. Good little, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anybody else? No? All right, thank you for your time. Thanks for allowing me to fill in for Josh, so.
Thank you.
Happy to do.
Thank you.
Okay, shall we have a little board?
That's like I should do. I didn't have one for last month, I mean, for March, so I'll do it for April. The numbers have picked up since April. Total number, I'm sorry. Total number of guests was 446, meals served was 101, money collected for meals 1,016.50, rent was 2.93, catering brought in 2,240, and paid, total paid to the city was $455.83. So we're moving, I think the weather's getting us where we need to be. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Can I move on to unfinished business? If that's on Communications. Unfinished business, we have ordinance 6, 2019.
Ordinance 6, 2019, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
We've adopted ordinance 6, 2019. It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt ordinance 6, 2019. So this is for which buildings?
This is what we commonly refer to as the TJ Phillips Building on 20 East Fifth Street. Jim is here, he can speak to kind of the background on the agreement reached with local business developers. And I guess after Jim has some background, we could go into more of the details with this.
Evening again, Jim Titt. I haven't seen you for a long time. But looking back, it was well over two years ago, we came before the Planning Commission, and we actually came before the council with a program to help support development in the downtown. The concept at the time was a key building rehab program, and it got unanimous support from both the Planning Commission and the council at that time. The basic concept is we identified buildings in the downtown that were key buildings in the town that take more than what is, we would consider a facade improvement program that's offered through Rediscover Downtown. These buildings are, take more than just a paint job or some sprucing up. These have some structural damage and need some serious rehabilitation to make them usable. The first building that we identified for potential development was the TJ Phillips Building, as the mayor suggested. We did advertise in the local papers for concepts for projects for anyone interested in partnering with the city in this effort. We asked for proposals. We kind of asked for a business plan, an outline of what the proposed business was going to be. And so through that advertisement, there was one response, which two of both of the developers are good, the audience today, Chad Patterson and Jason McClure, and I asked them to kind of give an overview of what their planned development is. Since that time, we have been working with the two developers. The committee has been meeting occasionally to kind of go over plans for the rehabilitation of the building, to look at code requirements, to come up with a budget, to look at ways for just putting that building back into a useful state. And so the committee has, again, worked with the two developers. We have agreed upon a budget for that, which is approximately $300,000. That is the budget. We're asking, at this point in time, for the city council to consider the appropriation of $200,000, which basically is a little bit over half, but the way this project, the way we're talking is, again, the budget is 300,000, 150,000 would be the city's match, the extra 50,000 would be held in contingency to match any change orders or those kind of things that would be required for the project. But it's our anticipation that the budget is 150,000, or 300,000, which the city's share would be, 150,000. The attorney for the city has been working with Chad and Jason's attorney in the development of an agreement, and so at this point in time, we're asking for your favorable consideration of the appropriation, so that the two developers can go ahead and move forward on securing their financing, their share of the financing for the project. And at this time, Jason, Chad, you want to talk a little bit about what your proposed reuse is for the building?
Hi, Jason McClure. Yeah, so we'd like to, our plan, which has received state approval for the drawings, is to turn the upstairs of the building into free apartments, and then down below will be a brewery, pizza, restaurant, and just local beer, local soda, so. Pretty basic. If you have any questions, I'd be able to answer.
So I assume you want to brew, you got to brew, you're a brewer? Yeah. Correct. And as we see in other communities, microbreweries have been a big success in other things. The other thing that they're actually looking at doing is developing the alleyway that runs between Brookshire Court and the TJ Phillips Building and having outdoor seating and using that alley and lighting that alley to be kind of an outdoor venue for outdoor seating and those kind of things.
And I would like to point out too, Jason has been committing apple cider wine, and he's been able to get the current product that he produces distributed through Kroger's, so it's, he's already established himself as being able to produce and market successfully and go to Indianapolis and get the drinks that Jason produces, who improve, well, not improve, but 131, down in Indianapolis and throughout the state. I don't know how far your distribution is.
Indianapolis, still off the, I'm a miss for walking.
And Mr. Patterson has been the contractor that's renovated several downtown buildings in Peru, and he did a large portion of the downtown buildings in Wall Bash, so it's not, it's not two people without qualifications and the background and history to be able to do this, so, thank you guys.
In summary, the last thing that I would say is that, as we discussed when we presented this concept to you in working with the mayor, is that these buildings that we're identifying are going to need this type of public-private partnership to make it feasible. To think that a developer is going to put this amount of money into a building, you know, the return on investment may not necessarily be there. So other communities have somewhat been successful, or have been successful with this program, one of those being Warsaw, program similar within the development in the downtown, but we truly believe it's going to take something like this for some of those buildings, otherwise they're going to wind up coming back on the city's rolls and be the candidate for demolition down in Peru. So anyway, be happy to answer any questions or.
Another thing to kind of consider too, is that the One South Broadway Building is another building that we've been working at through this key building program. We've spent, we've been, we spent, we last time put away 200,000 for One South Broadway in renovations there. That, I feel like has been a big success, it's been a huge morale boost.
it's not two people without qualifications and the background and history to be able to do this. Thank you, guys.
In summary, the last thing that I would say is that, um, as we discussed when we presented this concept to you in, in working with the mayor, is that these buildings that we are identifying are going to need this type of public-private partnership to make it feasible. To, um, think that a developer is going to put this amount of money into a building, you know, the return on investment may not necessarily be there. So other communities have somewhat been successful, or have been successful with this program. One of those being Warsaw, a program similar within the development in the downtown. But we truly believe it's going to take something like this for some of those buildings. Otherwise, they're going to wind up coming back on the city's roles and be the candidate for demolition down the road. So, anyway, be happy to answer any questions or?
Another thing to kind of consider too, is that, you know, One South Broadway Building is another building that we've been working at through this key building program. We've spent, um, we've been, we spent, we last time appropriated two hundred thousand for One South Broadway, and renovations there. That, I feel like has been a big success. It's been a huge morale boost for people in Peru to see that building fixed up and looking good. We don't have a, a confirmed rock-solid developer in use for that building. We've talked to, um, different developers who are interested, and I'm confident we will have that soon. With this one, with the TJ Phillips Building, the developers are local people who are established businessmen, who have shown that they can run businesses and can, um, produce quality products. And they're ready to go, they're ready to start that new business.
Is this a one-time thing, or would they come, or would they come back later for more?
Yeah, this, this would be a one-time thing contingent on if there were to be something unforeseen in the construction. Right now, we have certified plans from the state for them to start construction on the building and renovating it. If there were to be something in that that was unforeseen that would, um, cause there to be an increase in that, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar, um, plan for renovation, it could go more, but it would go before, um, the Key Building Committee to approve of that. And it would only go up to that two hundred thousand that we're approving. So right now, it's a hundred and fifty. There's that fifty thousand in contingency. And then, but in those contingencies, wouldn't just be approved, it would be something that had to come for that word for approval.
But also, I would add that fifty thousand in contingency matches their fifty thousand. So now, since, you know, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars worth of, of change that would require that. So it would just be the city's money that would help with that change. It would also be half of their money that would have to go in if there was something that was developed or in construction that nobody could do about.
And it's, and it would move them to, to try to keep the cost as low as possible. And if their, if their construction ends up coming in less than three hundred thousand, we would pay half of what the actual construction cost was too. So they're incentivized to try to do this efficiently, which will also save the city money.
And both of the gentlemen are locals, do you say?
Yes.
Both of them?
Yes, they both live in Miami County.
Right, right.
Both own and operate businesses in Miami County as well.
Oh, they really have, they, okay.
I'm so glad that these young people that are stepping out.
Right.
This rock community.
Any further questions? Okay, welcome.
Holland?
Yes?
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, guys. And next, we have ordinance seven, two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance seven, two thousand nineteen, and ordinance to establish city-operated PayPal account and the policies and operation, operating procedures to it.
Would we consider ordinance seven, two thousand nineteen?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Lee to consider ordinance seven, two thousand nineteen. Local.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes. Since there are no appropriations of funds dealing with ordinance seven, would we adopt ordinance seven, two thousand nineteen?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Lee to adopt ordinance seven, two thousand nineteen. My question on this is, um, is the city going to have to pay a discount fee to PayPal for accepting payments like this?
The, there is a two percent fee.
Okay. Um, I know that, um, when I pay payments to the state and, and BMB and things like that, that they charge you a two percent surcharge, so they're getting a hundred percent of the money. Are we going to do that? Or are we going to basically just eat the two percent?
I think the, um, idea here is we would take on that two percent in return for upping our fundraising ability through different things that we do.
Okay.
So you're saying that we would, we would pay it and not pass it on?
Well, it's not, it, it, the way that the ordinance is written, it is not written in there that we would put that on top of the, we would not add that surcharge.
And the way PayPal works is, using the city jailbreak as demonstration, a lot of people expressed interest that, that don't have cash, so can I make a PayPal payment? Or Venmo is the other one. And what they do is, they go transfer the funds to our account. And then once we, if I'm not mistaken, once we go to move it from a PayPal account to the actual City General Fund or wherever it's going to go, that's when the two percent fee is processed.
Yes, it would be less than two percent at that time, which means that the city is taking it on, so we're not adding the surcharge. But we're not, in essence, taking it on because it's coming out of the donated funds.
Yeah, we're not, like, appropriating money so that we can get that money. Yeah, it's coming out of the amount that was raised to. I understand that, I'm just saying, is this only for donated, for donated funds?
This is one hundred percent only for donations.
Okay, so it's not, it's like pay fees and all that kind of stuff?
That is.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that's what I was doing, sure, we're not, okay.
Yes, no.
Okay.
Yes. Good question.
Is, does it, does it, did it in here somewhere that it's only for donations? Want to make sure it's clear that, that somebody can't come up and pay a contractor's lightest bill or a, a, a fine or something like that, or?
Yeah, I think it says, whereas each donation must provide a statement that identifies which fundraiser the donation is being made for, or at which department is being made to.
It also says, whereas the purpose of the PayPal account is to allow the city to have the option and ability to receive electronic fund transfers during various fundraisers.
Okay, yeah, okay.
As required by law.
Any questions for anybody? Any questions in the audience? Make sense? Okay, welcome.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Uh, next, we have ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen, and ordinance of the city of Peru authorizing the issuance of a bond.
Would we consider ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Lee to consider ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen. Uh, nineteen, excuse me. Local.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not appropriating money again, but we are borrowing money. So I would like to move that we, um, have the ability to consider and adopt ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen in the same meeting.
I think you said ordinance, did you say ordinance nineteen?
Eight, two thousand nineteen. Ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen.
I heard two thousand nineteen somewhere, okay.
Second.
So it's eight, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Dustin to allow the consideration and adoption of ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen, in the same night. Local.
Holland? Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes. Would we adopt ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Langwell?
Yes.
To adopt ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen. Okay, um, we have been on here for sixteen years, and we have done this once or twice in the past. It's a strange animal. Basically putting the city hall on, on, on a mortgage because we've, we will have paid off the city hall. But in order, if you don't borrow the, the funds, you're, and we're paying about, we're paying about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in repaying the bond, we lose three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of tax money. So it actually costs you money to be out of debt.
Right.
It's a strange animal. And, and we have done this in the past, um, under the previous administration. I think I've, this is my, probably my third time I've done this. And, uh, just like, it, it's a quirky state law, but in order, it, it, you basically receive a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more than if you didn't do this. Strange. Strange but true.
Yeah.
I'll go from the books.
And so there you have it.
So there you have it. Any questions? Because it was strange to me when I first came across it, so.
Yeah, it is.
I assume that's correct, right? Yep.
Just, um, if I can to, just point out too, that because of the, um, property tax caps, even if we didn't receive that money, um, it would not really affect people's actual tax rate.
Yep.
Because in essence, every taxing entity is getting a cut from what they actually receive from the state because of the tax caps. And then so, the amount that were cut, the amount that the other taxing entities, that people in Peru were paying to, like the schools, the county, and these folks, they would get the money that we don't, basically. It wouldn't be that your tax rate would be much of a change. It would just be the tax dollars would shift over to one of the other taxing entities that are also seeing a cut from the tax, um, caps. So, and that's not that every single property is hitting the tax cap, but here, I'm only counting it's pretty close.
So it doesn't, so if we, so if we don't do this and we pay it, the bill off isn't going to affect your taxes at all.
Yeah.
So it's like, might as well do it then. And, um, okay. We are, okay, we won't talk about, this is just the ordinance two. All right, so, any questions? Local.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we've got the money, now we're going to spend the money.
Right.
Next, we have ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen, and ordinance to amend ordinance sixteen, two thousand eighteen.
And would we consider ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're on the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're following along, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you want to go back? We've got it out of order here. You want to, you want to consider ten for us since you mentioned that, or?
Um, we can do nine. Yeah, that's fine.
What do I do?
I mean, just, ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen.
Considering nine.
Okay, so we're going to, I move we consider ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen. And who was going to second?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Lee? It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Lee to consider ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen. Local.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes.
And would we suspend the rules and, and consider and adopt ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen, in the same meeting?
Very good.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Dustin to suspend the rules and consider and adopt ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen, in the same night. Local.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes. Would we adopt ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Dustin to adopt ordinance nine, two thousand nineteen. Now we have one point four, what are we going to suspend it on, Mr. Mayor?
Um, so we have, um, you have to outline what you can spend the funds on. It's pretty general. We did put in extra, um, categories that probably won't be spent on, but just in case. My anticipation, um, if I have the pleasure of making that decision, would be that most of these funds would be for paving and crosswalks on the sidewalks. You can see in exhibit A, there's a list of other things, oh, I'm sorry, and also there's two street department vehicles that we do need to get out of this. Those two street department vehicles were appropriated for this year. They're in the budget for this year. When North Mexico Road got so bad unexpectedly, we needed to pull funds out of the place that the funds were available to try to take care of as soon as possible. So talked to the street department, they said they were willing, and we could put off the purchase of those two vehicles. That's actually how we paid for the paving on North Mexico Road. So we'd like to get those back in the budget. So we are spending them on the two vehicles, but essentially those paid for paving. And like I said, most of what I'd like to do is paving and have ADA-accessible crosswalks. Other things that we could use it for is, uh, roadway infrastructure, it's proposed development sites at Broadway Landing and Riverview Landing. Upgrades to the city hall HVAC system, it's a little running here tonight. But, uh, that, we might not need to do that. We got, you know, Fitz working on, you know, upgrading the systems. City Park West is municipal golf improvements. Animal Control Building needs a new roof and a new garage door. So those are things we put in our contingencies. If we have money, we like to spend it on something. But really, those are kind of backups or filler in between what I feel like should be the, the main thrust, which would be paving and crosswalks.
List made?
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Lot of complaints. Underpass?
The underpass, as far as?
You want to, that shake your teeth.
Gotcha. Um, in North Broadway, um, all of North Broadway was in our plan to be paved in two years. So the part north of twenty-four did get bumped up, but that's still in the plan for, in two years. West Main is actually our next big project next year. This year, we are doing all of Parkview. So all of Parkview is going to get, um, repaved this year. But, yeah, and, and trying to figure out priorities and what we're going to do when we settle on West Main next year and the rest of North Broadway in twenty twenty-one, so.
Well, they did, they did a nice job on, 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 on Mexico Road. It was very, very well done, so. A little longer than the last batch, so.
No more recycled millings using, you mean, is correct?
Yeah, we put that now into the bids that go out, so they can't even bid recycling.
That's what caused all these problems.
Any questions from the audience? Questions up here? We're welcome.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen, and ordinance, uh, ordinance sixteen, two thousand fifteen.
Would we consider ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Lee to consider ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen. Local.
Holland?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Krauskopf?
Yes. Would we adopt ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilman Crosskopf and seconded by Councilman Lee to adopt ordinance ten, two thousand nineteen. I assume you're, you're the sponsor of it?
Yes, uh-huh. Um, well, um, being a garage seller myself, um, I just get a lot of comments from people around the city, you know, that like to do garage sales. It's just such an inconvenience for them to have to, for one thing, have to come to City Hall to get the, um, the permit and pay the five dollars, because sometimes they don't make it thirty, forty, fifty dollars. And that five dollars is not much to some people, it is, you know. And it takes a lot to put on a garage sale. So, um, I'm just trying to help those who really need them, you know, just to maybe pay a bill or something. And I know that's not the main reason, I guess, that we got this ordinance, but, um, that's the part that they just really don't like and would like to see changed. That was my reason for bringing this out.
I understand that, but this was bounced around for a long time before they finally voted on it. And it, it was a necessity because so many people were holding sales all week long, especially down Main Street. It just looked terrible because stuff was out there every day. And then it was not very orderly, and I, I understand what she's saying. So it's, it's catch twenty-two, I guess.
But we did leave in that there's, you know, a limit to how many they can have.
But there was a limit before too.
It just had, it must be enforced. There is a way to enforce that.
Say that again, please. Say that again, please.
It just needs to be enforced.
It's two, is it two per year, right?
Or, or no more than seven calendar days.
Right.
Yeah, it's a two, it's a, no more than two a year, no more than seven consecutive days.
That was the issue last time, was that, um, people were running businesses out of their garage, and the, the neighbors around- garage, and the, the neighbors around these, these few individuals were complaining that they had no place to park, there was confusion, there was this, that, and the other, and so the previous building, zoning, whatever administrator, required them to come up and get a, a, a permit from City Hall, that way he had something to check on. Because if he doesn't have anything, any way to, didn't have any way to check it, then it was just the, the neighbor's word versus the person doing the garage sale, and then he couldn't go back, he didn't have any, didn't have any follow-up to go back and check the following week to see if they were basically out, out of business. I mean, I know I had one of my neighbors who's, who's no longer there, but they had a rummage sale. I mean, there's no way two senior citizens had as much stuff to sell as they did. They didn't abuse it, but there was stuff there that, that belonged in a flea market. He was all out in the front yard, the whole garage, the whole driveway, and there's no way two seventy-five-year-old people had all that stuff to sell. I, I never complained, but I could, because I've got more space between my house and some others, but that was the, that was why I voted on this ordinance back in two thousand and whatever it was, fifteen, so.
I don't know, from what I can tell, it's very much the, you know, how the administration chooses to enforce the ordinances there on the books. Having a fee and having a permit creates an automatic piece of documentation that you have immediately, that does put the owners on the person having the garage sale, and you might argue that they're running a yard sale, so, you know, they shouldn't go through that process of starting that. We've become, in this administration, very used to enforcing ordinances, much as you know of a lot of people, but we definitely, we are very practiced at enforcing ordinance violations. I feel like our building department does a great job, and that they can do it without that tool. I'm not saying it's not a valid tool, or it wasn't a valid tool, to have employees, but it is something that I've had confidence that we can do without.
Since two thousand fifteen, how many permits have been issued for that, do you know?
Um, I do know that last year, we brought in two hundred and eighty-five dollars, so divide that by five, and that's how many were coming in last year.
Since two thousand fifteen, how many people that have you guys cited or anything?
I haven't ever cited one at all.
So, useless.
Sort of, we need to enforce the five-dollar rummage permit. People get in it, then it would be the handful of people I believe that have used that ordinance go, and they're having a rummage, I mean, all drive.
So, he goes, haven't received any complaints?
You go and tell them, this is your first day, this is your second day. I mean, you issue paperwork with each one of those, and then at the end of that, if they have more than that, they go on the petty charges.
I know there are a lot of people that don't even pay the, that get the permit or pay the five dollars.
That's what I mean, that's why I was asking, how many people have also have been issued for not following the ordinance, and there's been nobody, so.
Well, I think it also depends on, on, if you have a complaint filed by a neighbor, and if they haven't, and if they haven't received, you know, come up and paid their five dollars and gotten the permit, if, you know, if there's no complaints and that, that's okay, but if you do have a complaint and you've got nothing to go back on, then, then that's the issue. And so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't see anything wrong with the ordinance we passed four years ago. It gives the administration at least some legal grounds to go out and, and, and get people to follow the rules. If you're, if you're going to, you know, I just don't wanna see people having businesses run out of their garages and, and then have people complain about it, so that's what I was set up.
I can't say that I've issued at least two dozen violations for people running businesses out of their homes and buying them. I, I mean, I believe that a huge rummage that you have, it's not my place to assume where that stuff came from. They're allowed to have two per calendar year, no more than seven consecutive days, even with that five-dollar permit, so.
But how do you track that?
The permitting?
Well, no, I mean, I mean, we, so the permitting was in place so that we had a tracking system, so that when they came up and they said, hey, I'm gonna start my, you know, garage sale on this day, and you can say, okay, seven days later, and so if you drive by seven days later and see they're still having a garage sale, you can say, hey, you're, you get fined, right?
Maybe a free registration?
Uh, no, okay, so some way that you could track that, right? So, some way that it doesn't cost you five dollars, but they still have to come and track so that, because otherwise, if you get a, if you get a complaint, somebody calls you and complains, and maybe the complaint didn't happen until three days after they started the rummage sale, you go down there, you say, hey, you know, we got this complaint, this is the complaint, okay, I've only been doing this for, you know, I just started today, right? As they tell you, but you, you have no justification to know whether they did it or not, right?
Well, as it is, I've never had any complaints from that since I've been in it, honestly.
Well, it's not to say that it wouldn't happen.
But it could happen, and I, I can assume here, and I'm going to assume, that in that situation, I can see myself walking up to that person and then not having that five-dollar permit anyway.
Sure.
Because I'm not gonna drive around every Friday and Saturday morning and not do my zoning administrator job just to check on rummage permits for five dollars fees. Seems like a waste of your, always have to give money to pay.
And I would say too, that if, like every time there's something like a permit that's being given, that adds some administrative time and effort upon administration, and so the, the time and effort for the employees of City Hall to hand out permits and for enforcement to go and check on the permits is part of why there's a fee, and so I would caution, I would say, against permits that don't have fees, because it kind of wears away the logic between, behind a lot of our fees for permits, like building permits. It's predicated on the idea that there's administrative costs that accumulate from administering that and keeping up on them. So, I'm not saying we couldn't do it, I would just, I would personally caution against that, because I think that kind of rewires some of the logic behind other ones.
I guess my thing is, anything in the zoning ordinance that's put in there, such as the five-dollar permit for a rummage sale, anything that's in there, from the smallest thing to the biggest thing, I would like to have a way to enforce it and for it to be enforced a hundred percent, black and white across the board. This, I feel like, I mean, if we do it, it takes up so much time to enforce that five-dollar rummage permit, and it's rummage sales. Most people are having a rummage sale if they don't have one.
I've got pretty good neighbors, they're pretty cool, I don't have to worry about that, but there are people that I think allow to rummage sales, to buy stuff, bring it back to their house, and like you said, run a business.
Mm-hmm.
And I would be annoyed if that happened at my house, and then all of a sudden you're turning into, you turning in your neighbor, I mean, it just seemed, I don't know, I know, I understand the problem, I, I would say, I mean, give them the five dollar, but how do you track that? I just, if you come, how do you know that they haven't already been there for three days, and then you're, you're opening up to an arbitrary type of enforcement based upon, how do you know this is not their second or third rummage sale? And, but again, if they're not getting the permits to begin with, I guess, I don't know, but it just...
Yeah, and to your point, I think if there was a complaint and that a company person went out and saw that there was a, a first back being case, okay, you are having a rummage sale, I mean, you'd come back in seven days. Now, that would, you would have legal evidence of seven days, that might have been more than seven days to get that legal evidence, but if not, that you would then say, well, I heard it happened, it started seven days ago, so I'm gonna start your date, your notification on that, you've started on what you actually have documentation for, so.
Time stamp photo.
Well, but then also, how are you tracking that they don't have any more than two a year?
Just consider each individual day its own separate sale?
But that's not the way they're going to do this. I mean, I, it sounds like if we're not gonna enforce the ordinance at all, why have the ordinance at all?
Because there, it is a problem every once in a while. Can you remember the thing that was set up that I think of wanting specific, back behind Kmart? I do realize around that time and that.
That's what it's about.
And that was a huge issue, but it's one specific situation where these people had it for a month straight. If you, if you have it for a month straight, you can get them on that seven days. If someone wants to keep coming back, having it weekend after weekend, I am positive that a neighbor would complain if they're selling brand-new stuff out of their front yard or whatever they're doing, and the first time we hear of it, you go out there and there's your evidence, and then they have two. They have that one and one more, and they, I mean, you start finding them.
I'm sorry.
I just feel like there's few specific situations are easier to enforce than all these permits that's, I mean, you can go, you can look around and look around and see if you have a better way of enforcing that, but I'd just like to be able to enforce anything that's there.
I feel like that it's one of two ways. It's more for enforcement, and it's probably gonna go on longer before it ends up being caught and fined without this. It might be more like handled upfront with the permit fee, but then it is kind of, you take the honest off the token enforcement, put it on everybody wants to have a garage sale. And I'm not saying it may weigh as, we don't have any other, you know, I've ordered against it when I was on council, so.
Of course, that's the way most laws come into being to begin with, because somebody does something stupid, ninety-nine percent of the people don't do it, but then one percent does it, so you have to write a law to exclude the one percent. And here we are again, ninety-nine percent of the people are fine, it's one percent abusing it, and, and, and so you have to write a law that...
I, I feel like there should, needs to be an ordinance in place for too many rummages. I do firmly believe that. I believe it needs to be an ordinance that's more simple and enforcing it than each, because honestly, I get it, if I were to get a complaint, which I haven't, and go there, I would almost put money on, they don't have a permit, they're not following the rules to begin with, why would they get a permit?
So, either way, you'd be going on complaints anyway, you should, basically.
Yeah.
I've always wondered how, how you think that...
I think the, the, the main, the main focus of, of the ordinance to begin with was so that the previous zoning administrator had a beginning date and an end date, and, and, by coming up there to get a permit and pay the, the token five dollars, he had a, you know, if there was a complaint, then, well, your, your, your rummage sale's supposed to be from May sixth to May thirteenth, and that's it. And so, I think that was, that was the whole crux of the, when they presented it to us back in two thousand fifteen, so just needed something to, to, to hang his hat on and to, and to go by, so.
Please, Stephanie, let me ask you this. How, do you know how many permits have been paid for in two thousand nineteen so far?
On rummage sale permits? That would have to be a report. Um, I can, I can tell you that I've went around rummaging shortly after I started this position and kind of paid attention, and was like, I don't think I came to one in a whole Friday that had a rummage sale permit, and was like, I don't know how to enforce this, I don't even know how to address it at that point. That's when I started looking into that ordinance. Like, we do things to alleviate it a little bit, like the ones a month for, like, Chamber Commerce, and then they give me advertising to go with it, that sort of thing, but it's one of the bigger complaints that I hear also, a lot of rumors.
My stance is, once again, some people don't have a lot of money, and so I, I think I'm, I'm for it, just because some families, you know, work tricky jobs, you know, the, you know, in a family, and they still don't have enough to meet their needs, so why should we pay them? Because some, a few would take advantage of it, so that punishes them that they can't have the, you know, a new yard sale to pay a bill or something. Because I just hear it so many times, so I'm just thinking of, you know, some, a, a part of the community that needs yard sales, and I think since we passed, the past when ordinance, yard sales have sort of drifted off a little bit, you know? The people don't wanna deal with their permit and all that, and they wanna do the right thing, so we used to have them, but then that takes away their chance of earning some extra money. And a lot of people improve, work minimum wage jobs of eight or nine dollars, ten dollars, but sometimes that does, that's not enough. So, why not let them, you know, at least try and make money rather than to go out and do other good things to make money?
Uh, welcome.
Hang on. Restate how the question's at. Restate how the question's at, so I know how to answer it.
Well, this ordinance basically says that you cannot have more than two, two hundred sales per year, no more than seven days per sale, and there'll be no fee. That's how that ordinance is written.
If you vote yes, you would change it. If you vote no, it stays as it was before?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Holland?
Yes.
Guston?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
No.
Kroskop?
No. That was...
Three, three.
Three, three. Oh, so no, that's, uh, my decision.
Get one.
I don't know, that doesn't happen too often. Uh, I vote yes. Motion passes. That is not something I have...
I don't think you've done it.
I don't know if I've ever...
That's a first.
Yeah, that's a first, no. Glad I used to practice at doing that.
We can't let that happen anymore, again.
All right, next we have ordinance eleven, two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance eleven, two thousand nineteen, and ordinance to amend ordinance one, two thousand six.
May we consider ordinance eleven, two thousand nineteen?
Very good.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and seconded by Councilman Guston to consider ordinance eleven, two thousand nineteen. You're welcome.
Holland?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Kroskop?
Yes. May we adopt ordinance eleven, two thousand nineteen?
Very good.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt ordinance eleven, two thousand nineteen.
So, why are we changing here? Just telling them that they have to have workers' comp insurance?
Yeah, so, it, it was brought up that whether or not somebody needed workers' comp insurance to be a rusher contractor. If you are a sole proprietor and you got no employees, you're not required to have workers' comp on yourself as a sole proprietor. You're only obligated to have workers' comp if you have employees, and so it's one of those things, if you do have employees and you are required to have workers' comp, I know when I had my comp, my business, the insurance company, they would not allow me to have insurance to cover my business without all the proper insurance like workers' comp. So, it's really something that I think, as long as the person is showing they have insurance, it's not needed to say that you have to have workers' comp within the ordinance, and as it reads right now, if you're a sole proprietor and you don't have workers' comp on yourself technically by the ordinance says, you're not supposed to have a contractor's license in program, so.
So, businesses who don't have employees, but they have contracted ten ninety-nine and labor, are they required to have workers' comp?
By law, no.
By law, okay. So, it's just if they have a full-time employee, not ten ninety-nine employees?
No.
Not ten ninety-nine workers?
They withhold taxes that makes them an employee.
Right. I know.
So, this will only affect people who have regular full-time employees or hard-time employees that are, that are on payroll, what are...
It, it wouldn't affect those people that don't have any employees, they're just one person doing contracting, because the people that do have employees, they still have to have workers' comp.
Right.
And they'll still carry it, and really, the people that don't have any employees, they're probably not carrying workers' comp, because it's pretty expensive, and so this And so this is really just making the ordinances match what's happening in reality, really.
Okay, but this will not affect businesses who only have 1099 workers?
Right, because we're not saying that you're not required to have workers' comp if you have employees. We're just saying that's not a requirement to get registered.
Okay. Man. I didn't know that was that way.
Any questions?
Welcome.
Holland?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Kroskop?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next we have ordinance 12, 2019.
Ordinance 12, 2019, and ordinance to amend ordinance 3, 2018.
I move to consider ordinance 12, 2019.
Record.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and seconded by Councilman Guston to consider ordinance 12, 2019. Record.
Holland?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Kroskop?
Yes. We will adopt ordinance 12, 2019.
Record.
It's been moved by Councilman Kroskop and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt ordinance 12, 2019.
Is this a street that just won't go away?
This is actually not the West Main. You're picking up like 16 weeks, but it is another one in the two-mile. And back in 2018, Luke, Timmy, and I both were under the assumption that this was already reported and finished and done. And the property owner takes it to the reporter's office. Well, looking through there, it had never been reported. So I gave another copy to the property owner and she took it to the reporter's office. And you see in the previous one, there is a typo in there. There's a parcel number listed twice. It's supposed to be 033 on the bottom one instead of 034 twice. Then also they added in there, and I call the previous alley closings, that Rhonda from the reporter's office told me that they will no longer record an alley closing unless it has an additional section added in, which is on the new ordinance, section two, as you can read it. It has every corner of everything divided to the specific law. So I re-typed it for them so this lady can get it recorded.
Okay. Well. Unless you think about it on those ladies.
Well, it's a county issue. It's part of, it's what I deal daily with dealing with county of the two-mile pieces.
There is legislation though to disband the two-mile jurisdictions?
There is?
Pending. Because shouldn't the commissioners be the one?
It will then have to, it has to pass through external ordinance. The city deals with two-mile zoning, county deals with building, but anything that is reported, really our city council that goes into the two-mile has to go from the city council to commissioners, the way you're taking it now.
Right.
So then it's.
Okay, and you said that it said 33, it should be 33 and 34?
Yes, there was a typo in there.
So it should be 33 and 34?
Yes.
Okay, so if you look at on the second page where it says now therefore be it ordained, I see that same dash 034 in there twice again.
That's your old ordinance.
No, no. That's newer.
Yes, that's your, that's a copy. You have on your first page here, you have your address commending ordinance to vacate alley, and then on the new ordinance, there's four sections. And if you're seeing the 034 twice, it's previous ordinance stated.
Okay, so that second paragraph is part of the previous ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Make this thing go. Nine months, 10 months, a year. Does anybody have any questions about this? Any remarks, readers? Hurry.
Call before somebody changes their.
Holland?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Langwell?
Yes.
Kroskop?
Yes. Motion passes.
Anything further from the audience? Comments, questions, suggestions? Tomorrow's voting day. Be sure to vote early, vote often. Where do you vote? Courthouse? I don't know. Courthouse, I don't know. Courthouse or the courthouse?
Yeah.
35 and.
Yeah.
Quappy Methodist.
Right.
Quappy Methodist Church, courthouse, and then senior center.
And those are the only ones I'm aware of.
There you go. Just pretend like it's Chicago, vote early, vote often.
They stopped doing great rates?
Oh, I don't know.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn. They're moving second to adjourn. I'll vouch. I oppose. Goodbye.